Good evening, and thank you for waiting patiently for us. We apologize, but we are ready to go. And first item of business is item four, comments from the public. Are there any items regarding agenda items or items that are not on the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, then I would ask for an adoption of tonight's agenda item five.
Second.
All in favor? All right, and we have no consent tonight, so that makes it straightforward. Perfect, Mike is joining us, and we can go right into the budget hearing, so.
Yeah, so budget hearing two, I will start. Welcome, everyone. Budget hearing two is a continuation of the administration's proposed budget of a 2.3% increase over last year's budget. And on March 5th, we shared the proposed budget, and Kelly explained that it is a budget-to-budget increase, not a tax levy increase. That distinction is really important in just about every meeting we have. Our budget-to-budget increase does reflect a lot of enhancements to security, the addition of an SRO and our security manager, our extracurricular supervision that through the year we have worked on setting up for next year, and also capital improvements that are really trying to negate the need to go out for a bond unnecessarily. We've been very successful in that end.
And you may be wondering about the increase of 2.37% in a declining enrollment period that we're having. But on an annual basis, there are increases such as utility costs, BOCs, our property order insurance, building maintenance, and our salary and benefits. So of the 2.37% increase next year, 2.34% of that is salary and benefits. So the increase in salary equates to 1.7%, and benefits is 1.6%. So majority of that increase is based on our staffing, our salary, and our benefits.
Which is customary for contracts. So highlights for tonight's presentation for budget hearing two. We will be hearing about programs for students with special needs, computer-assisted instruction, art and music instruction, curriculum and development, and public information services. So I want to thank Jill Boynton, Director of Special Education, Special Services, Dr. Andrew Taylor, Director of Technology, Deepak Marwa, Director of Fine Arts, and tonight, Tim will be presenting the curriculum component, and I will speak to the public information services that I've shared with the board before regarding our television and communications center. So thank you for coming and for describing, presenting your budgets and describing your proposed changes. I think it's important to note for the people that are presenting tonight that most of the budgets being presented here affect multiple children in multiple ways. Like, technology is not an isolated event. Technology is everything from the technology teachers and staff members are using to run and function our school district, as well as technology that is being used to teach students and technology students are using. So when we see these budgets, we have to remember that it encompasses more than, let's say, a book order for language arts or English K-12. Even in special services, the integrated co-teach model, this is a model that is impacting students in general education classrooms as well. So these budgets are a little more extensive than some of the others, not in price necessarily, but certainly in their scope. And I guess we will start with Jill tonight, our Director of Special Services.
So I just wanted to start out and talk about the first line, the salary increase. You'll see an increase of 10.2%. Half of that increase is our contractual salary for our staff on a year-to-year basis based on the contractual agreements. But three, an increase of three aides is based on our tuition students. So we tuition students in, the District of Residence pays that tuition amount, and we bill them the salary for the aides as well. So you're seeing the expense side of this, we're getting some revenue for tuition and reimbursement from other school districts based on that. So that explains some of the increase. Also, lastly, five of the aides, when the budget was done last year, were budgeted in the general fund as aides within the classroom. During the school year this year, they've been shifted over to the special ed based on our student needs. So that increase is also shifting from your regular education aides to your special education aides. So it's not an increase in aides, it's just a relocation from general code to special ed code. So you'll take a look, when you look in your binders, you'll see a decrease in those codes for aides in the general one, in 2110, the regular teaching. Okay, so I just want to explain that increase. Now turn it over to Jill.
So the proposed, good evening. The proposed 2019, 2020 special services and health services budget supports special education programs and services for students with special needs, health services, psychological services, English as a new language, and accommodations for students who require 504 accommodation plans. Based on the October 2018 data reporting, Byram Hills has 335 students with special needs with individual education programs, meaning IEPs, in the district. This is roughly 13.5% of our population, based on the October head count. In reviewing some neighboring districts' data, for example, Pleasantville's percentage of students with disabilities is 14%, Bedford's is roughly 12%, Chappaqua, students with disabilities 12%, and Mount Pleasant's is 13%. So we are right in the range of our neighboring school districts with our students with special needs percentages. Currently, we also have 22 students placed in out-of-district schools and programs. Two of those students will be graduating in the end of this school year. Our district also receives tuition, as you heard from Mr. Cyber, from three neighboring school districts for four students. Those districts are Mount Pleasant, Chappaqua, and Rice City. Three of these students require the support of one-to-one or shared aides, of which, as he had said, we will build back the District of Residence for these costs. We are continuously working hard to provide programs for our students in a least restrictive environment. Our students are engaged in self-advocacy and are involved in determining their own educational goals and plan. The teachers design, provide, and assess the effectiveness of specially-designed instruction to provide students with disabilities with access to participate and progress in the general education curriculum. Thanks to the board's support, we now have integrated co-teaching in grades kindergarten through 10. And this upcoming school year, we are using existing staff to add the co-taught English 11 to the programs at the high school. In reference to the specific items on the screen, specifically the salaries line as indicated earlier, does have an increase due to contractual obligations, and there was a need for several shared one-to-one aides for students. And again, as stated earlier, we will be able to build back those districts of residence. The equipment line this year remains the same, there is no increase or decrease. It should be noted also, and you'll see that in your binders and the individual line items, that we changed four of our budget line descriptions to match the purpose of the allocations this year. So the first one would be tuition, other public, and consortium, and we collapsed those two lines. The second one is tuition for New York State Ed-approved. That was instead of tuition handicap, as it had been described as tuition handicap for a long time, and we changed that to tuition, New York State Ed-approved. Committee on Special Education had been termed Committee on Handicap, and we changed that to Committee on Special Education. And tuition settlements is more appropriate, and that also had been just named tuition other schools. And it's important because as you see on the next line, below equipment, contractual and other, it has an increase of 9.4, but this line includes the out-of-district student placements and the settlement agreements now. The BOCs service line has a 39.6% decrease due to the fact that we are not sending many students to BOCs programs and need to reflect the students' actual placements at public schools or New York State-approved schools in the contractual and other sections as mentioned above. The materials and supplies line has a 1.9% decrease, and as always, as we've done as a practice in the past, as you'll see in the backup information, that there are unanticipated tuition costs built into our budget, and we have to have them in case we have students that move into the district that require extensive services or programs, or those students might need an out-of-district placement, so we have to build that in. The health services, psychological services, and English as a new language budgets all remain the same without any increase, and you'll see that on that.
This may not be numbered, you have your fingertips, but just if you look over the last few years, is the 13.5% pretty stable, or has it gone up or pulled down?
For our district, it's been about the same. I went back to the 14, 15 school year, and each year, our numbers of students with special needs, as you know, of course, the district has a little bit of a decrease in enrollment, but our numbers for students with special needs has gone from 324 to 322 to like 327, 338, and 335.
So percentage has gone up, but the numbers still stay the same.
Right, right, exactly.
Which explains his kids staying.
I just, I have a question. You were talking about what we have to keep and reserve in case, reserve might not be the right word, in case some, we have kids moving in that need to be sent out of district. Are we allowed to pull that money from somewhere else if we didn't reserve that earmark for special ed?
They could make a budget transfer.
Right, so is that something we would ever consider doing? Not earmarking it for special ed in case we needed it, but tap in somewhere else?
I can tell you, sorry, but like in the last, in the last four years since I've been here, having it has been helpful because I've had to allocate it, like, you know, early on in the school year, so it's, we're fortunate that we've had it, so.
Yeah, I think it's good practice to have a little contingency in the code, but obviously we could transfer from a different code if need be, and we would if she was, she went over.
I just have a question. I'm looking at the program with special needs portion of my book, and the proposed budget you're showing on the screen is $10,843. Here it looks like it's showing $10,454.
$10,529.
I see $10,529. I'm looking at, looking at page number of the special needs, page four of eight.
Four.
Four of eight.
So you're looking.
I guess I read the 10,000 is $10,529, but that's still different to $10,843.
So you're just looking at program, so you have to look at.
I'm just looking at what's in my book.
Okay, so there's three components of budget, program, capital, administration. So if you add the, if you take the program number and you add the administration number, you'll come up with that dollar.
So administration number is another couple hundred grand?
I guess it's the difference.
I believe you. Let's see.
It's the salary, five to ten, 2250.
And is there?
I see a number of.
388708.
Three special needs.
Something five to five.
388708.
Yep.
Okay, so that goes in there. All right, and that's included in the salaries?
Yes.
So Jill, you're saying we're going to capture some of this back, so the 10.2 that we're going up in the administrative's proposed budget, this is a one-off for this year, or what is it?
There's not a guarantee that it's a one-off for this year because, again, we have to provide the mandated services for our students that are here in our district.
Right.
You know, we do have programs that other districts send students to because, you know, we do a phenomenal job and.
We also send students out.
We do send students out, so I can't guarantee that it's, you know, we always.
No, no, this is not, this is not a criticism, I just want to understand that 10.2% is an eyebrow raiser, so that's why I'm asking you.
But again, the 10.2 is, we have three additional new aides for students that are coming in tuition-based, so that salary we have to pay out, but we're getting revenues on that side. And then we shifted five aides.
And that connects up next week.
Yeah, expense to revenue side, right. And then we shifted five aides from the general code. If you look at 2110 code for aides, you'll see a decrease of 160.
Fortunately, as I get older, these, I need a little bit of my magnifying glass, I have to break.
That's just a shift of code, you know, so it's 10 point, it's, you know, 10.2%, but you're shifting five aides, money, salary from five aides from regular to special ed, so that's a big increase.
So the only increase is the contractual amount to those five people.
Yeah, your salary, your steps on a year-to-year basis.
So when you make those two adjustments to net the revenue and to the reallocation, is this, do you know what the 6.5 increase is at the end of the day, if you adjusted those two items out? Like, does it come down to, is it 5%, is it 3%, is it 1%?
Yeah, I mean, I would say the salary code is about 5%. If you take out the shift in the five aides and the three aides from tuition, it's about 5%.
Like, the 10% comes down to 5% probably?
Yeah, it's about half of it, yeah, it's about 5%. So it's not, it's new money, it's shifting, and it's revenue side for tuition, but you got to pay it out of the expense side.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I tried, that's why I wanted to explain it in the beginning, so it makes sure it wasn't a big surprise.
I guess for you, Jill, sometimes you don't know from year to year, you know who's moving into the district, what grade they're coming in, and what expenses will be.
And one student could be, you know, a $100,000 teacher, and then transportation for $200,000.
No, no, it's very possible, they have obligations.
Okay, when you think about the opportunities to bring more kids in district if we have programs that make a lot of sense for those kids, or conversely, we move kids out of district when we don't have the right programs, and this is not necessarily a question that could take into effect July 1st, what do you think over like the next few years, like, are there potential opportunities either to build programs here that are going to be great programs for kids and be more economic than sending them out? Or conversely, are there programs that just like don't make economic sense, given that we have strain in our budget to match those kids with excellent opportunities in neighboring districts? Like, how do you think about that process of trying to evaluate that?
So knowing that we started the program at the high school, which our students in the younger grades flow to eventually, that program, the ungraded program, has absolutely blossomed, and our students in that program, we contract with job coaches, the students are working in the high school and working out in the district, and we've had several districts come to look, and we do have students that come to us from other programs, other districts, into that high school program. Well, my mission, I would love to continue to expand that, and we do have the ungraded program at the middle school, but to continue to make it more attractive for other districts to send their students with that particular need here to us. It's difficult to program for the students that have significant emotional needs, mental health needs, acting-out behavioral needs, and, you know, we may have so few students that require that level of support, it's difficult to program for those students. So I find that it's, it's a little bit, it's been very attractive for other districts. Our students have blossomed, they're doing really well, we want to make them as independent as possible post-secondary, and the program that we've designed here is really, really meeting the needs for the students.
And also the flexible support program, there's probably over a dozen kids in that program right now that if it weren't for that program, they would be out somewhere else.
That's amazing, that nearly has grown.
Yep.
So that's in addition to the special class.
Is there, not that I'm heading to the budget, but is there a need or a reason that that could be considered for the middle school, or is, would that not be necessary, a flex program in the middle school?
It could, we've talked about it a little bit at the consortium meetings that we've had, and speaking to the other directors in the other districts, what the needs are, and it's a possibility, it's something to explore potentially over a five-year period. Another thought would be to, and you know, of those 335 students that I mentioned before that are students with special needs, 201 of our students spend 80% or more of their day in general education in our district, which is phenomenal statistics.
Is that because of the co-teaching?
Yes, yes, and, and we do have student, a lot of students that are just resource room only, so, you know, the majority of the day they'd be in Gen Ed, but the co-teaching has certainly provided an opportunity for the students to be in general education.
I think it's such a great program for the Gen Ed kids too, because they, they get the extra support in the classroom, but they're also learning empathy, and they're, you know, they're having exposure to kids who are like them, they're being taught to be patient and to help, to help their peers, and it's a great program all around, I love the budget performance.
When you, I guess, one of the big items is just outsourced services, so whether it's therapy, you know, different types of therapy services, I guess, also a question more for, as you think forward, like, the next few years, I guess, the availability, is there, you know, are there enough providers out there? And then when you think about just how, how their cost has progressed over time, is it like rising faster than ultimately like the district's budget, or is it, is it, you know, something that's very manageable?
So if you recall, last year, we did put out a request for proposal for OTPT and educational services, and at the time of the year that the board had awarded that to the new contracted agencies, the annual reviews were already pretty much almost done. So this school year, the staff or the people that are contracted agents, they are actually, you know, living with whatever the recommendations were from the annual review season from the previous, excuse me, from the previous year. So in moving forward, we're in the annual review season right now, and that was one of the things that they had an opportunity to look at, you know, were there additional services recommended? And it was one of the things that I had wanted to look at and was looking at very closely, looking at staff schedules, looking at the members of staff that were coming from the agencies, looking at recommendations for students. So moving forward, the contracted agents, in particular for OT and PT, not necessarily speech, they actually are coming into the annual reviews and really looking laser-focused at recommendations for students, because it has to be educationally relevant, occupational therapy and physical therapy for students. And in a district our size, it is something that we need to always be mindful of. So I'm hopeful that in the next, over the next year and then the following year, that some of those costs for OT for their contracted services should, we should see a decrease in that.
Any other questions for Jill?
You don't come here that often, which is probably good for you.
Where's this going?
It's going to a very good course, actually, because I was, very few people talk to me in town anymore, but those who do, two parents in particular said, "Aren't you on the board?", and I had to confess, and they really just were raving about the special ed. So you should be very proud of what you're doing, and it's tough, I mean, I think you own one of the toughest jobs in the district, frankly, so congratulations on your budget, congratulations on your job, well done.
On that note, so I was at a, at the convention, at the schoolwork convention, and there was a panel talking about special ed, and it's a very large class item for all districts throughout the state, and, and they made the comment on the panel that it's the toughest job in a school district. There you go.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, and we certainly have, we have so much support and, you know, great teams in all the buildings, so I thank you very much.
Next to Tim, of course.
Our kids are benefiting from it, Jill, so.
Thank you.
Karen, thank you for coming to support.
Yeah, thanks, Karen.
And now to Dr. Andrew Taylor for computer-assisted instruction.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to, first off, pointing out a few things about the budget, that some numbers that you, to tell you what's behind them. So if you notice on, under contractual, there's a large increase under contractual because the BOCs services changed this year, and they went to a managed service, and we found that we needed some additional support in technology to help manage the managed services actually. So we actually went out for an RFP and actually got additional support that is actually going to help manage the support that we're getting. We have a couple things, and that's where that increase in contractual services came from. We were able to balance out some other areas of the budget, so that makes it overall budget was only a 2.2% increase. Our goal is, though, with that service that we're contracting out for, we're able, we're going to be able to look at the BOCs services a little bit more discreetly and look at some of the services that we're currently purchasing, and see if it makes sense to pull some of those, those services into our, into our district. Technology's changed over the last six, eight years, some of them are, can be cloud-based, there's some ways that we can provide these services in a much different way that we think could save us some, some money in the long run. So we're hoping that in the long run, this is actually going to reduce some of our overall costs.
Is it an annual thing, or is it just a one-time, one-year analysis?
Well, it's an annual, it's a person, full-time person that we're contracting for for.
Got it, okay.
Also in this budget is also a $700,000 IPA. Normally, our IPAs in the district run around $400,000 to $500,000, but this year, we had E-rate money that we needed to spend for some of our.
E-rate money?
E-rate money, so federal money that we get 50% back from the federal government, and it can be used towards some of our infrastructure. So out of that $700,000 IPA, 300,000 of it is actually E-rate dollars, so we'll get 150,000 of that back, which, so if you look at the, the revenue side of this, actually, if you were to put that 150,000 back, which we'll get back in a year, we would actually have a negative 1% increase this year with that, with that 150,000 put back into our budget.
Which for technology is unbelievable.
So other things in the budget, so we were able to do our first round of replenishment of our Chromebooks, our Generation One Chromebooks from 2014 are actually aging out right now. Our Generation Two, that we got in 2015, we actually think we're going to get a little bit longer life, they made some corrections, so I think we'll actually be able to get five or six years out of that. That first generation, though, we, we need to replenish them, so we're replacing all of our first-generation Chromebooks. We're able to make sure that all of our desktops are up to date, and we have desktops are all within three years without every desktop in the district. We're increasing some Mac labs in the high school, replacing some of the labs in the graphic arts rooms and a few different Mac lab areas, making sure that we have Promethean boards in every instructional space, we've got about 98% of them covered right now, we have a few more that we're going to look at. We were looking at different sizes and playing with whether or not we wanted to go Promethean or go Monitor, so we're still making some decisions on that, but by next year, we'll have every instructional space covered with a new display device.
K312?
K312. We're currently at 98% and all of our large instructional spaces are, but we're looking at some of the smaller areas and some small breakout rooms, these are other areas that students use, we want to be able to have that technology in there as well for them. So now we're going back and we're looking at some of those spaces and putting them in there. We're continuously looking at our software purchases, because when we went one-to-one, our software is, has gone up every year. This year, we're trying to keep it stable at a, at a zero increase or a small increase this year, and trying to really reevaluate all of the applications purchases. It's a good year to do that because with the new Title II-D laws that are coming out and the new, the Ed II-D laws and Part 126 regulations, it's a good chance for us to actually reevaluate all of our purchases and make sure that they're all in alignment and go back through them one by one and look at them.
Just for the sake of our public, who doesn't understand the acronyms that those regulations are about?
Sure, two years ago, the state passed a law called Ed Law II-D, and Ed Law II-D required that, required the state education department to do a whole series of things, and one of them was hire a chief privacy officer. The chief privacy officer, their job was to actually create regulations that the state had to follow. Those regulations are currently in front of the Board of Regents at the state, and it's a comment period right now. So we're all sort of giving some feedback to the state on things that we would like to see as part of the new regulations, some things that they're mandating from schools. There's 108 controls in the new regulations of things that as a district, we have to actually make sure that we're following and different controls that we have to put in place.
The security of the system.
These are all data security controls, yeah, so it's just ensuring that we have, and we've been working on this, knowing sort of what was coming down the road for a year now, kind of not knowing exactly what was going to be proposed, but having an idea of what was being proposed. So there's parts we've been putting in place, but if you remember back in the fall, I came when we talked about a data position that we're adding, we're actually looking, we've been working with civil service to get that position approved, which is quite a process. So we're actually going to contract out for that position, to a shared position with a contracted, the same actually group that we're going to for the systems engineer for next year.
And will that person report to you, or would that be part of the security?
He would report to Andrew, all technology.
And this is really looking at personally identifiable information and data security within the district.
It's important.
Never be too safe.
Yeah, you have to go step ahead, not easy.
It is important, but it is good to say the state's putting a lot of demands on school districts, and again, it's another mandate from the state, so if we can point that out. Andrew's been a strong advocate on behalf of schools through the different forums we've gone to, to speak out that this is a big demand on us at state, and we're trying to ask state ed that they should be doing some of this work.
Yeah, there's a couple things that really would make sense for the state to do for the schools, instead of having all the schools do individually, for example, one thing that we've been really promoting as an ed tech community is vetting of software. Every district has, lawyers look at their software purchasing agreements, we go through all of these, you know, we're spending millions and millions of dollars when we could centralize that at the state education department, save millions of dollars across the state, and actually just have a repository of applications where we can say, "Has this been approved or not? If not, then resubmit it to get approved at state."
They did for the teacher evaluations.
They've done it for those things, yes.
Now they're making other school districts do it, so if we all use, there's a lot of software we use in common, but all 700 school districts have to analyze that themselves.
So we have to.
They're talking about saying some things out.
We'll be paying BOCs for that, and we'll be paying BOCs with the added administration, administration. And we'll be paying BOCs with the added administration, administrative.
Yeah, and there's some practices that we're going to need to shift, which actually are going to change instruction a little bit. For example, right now, we have a, we allow teachers to install applications, but then we have a system that alerts us if those applications are sharing personally identifiable information. To me, that's a better process because it allows them to do some things that they need to do and do it to try to test things when they're testing stuff for classes. Now we're going to need to close it down so those applications can't be installed unless they've been approved first. To me, that just slows down the whole process and it's going to make it much more difficult to teach and much more difficult to do some of the things. So we have to make some decisions over the next year about how we want to roll that out.
Scott, to your point, we do purchase some software through BOCs and they will be vetting all of the software that runs through them, so there may be some we don't have to do because it's going through BOCs.
We also are purchasing with a company called Education Framework, which actually does the vetting of the software for us. It looks at all the data privacy laws and gives us a sort of a Likert scale on each of the areas of how well they do each of those components.
Could be something that we could ask the state to have the state have an approval list. I mean, that sounds brilliant, to have just one approval list that everybody can order from.
But with technology coming out as quickly as it does...
The state's... They've sort of agreed to do that for Google and Dell and a few of the larger companies. And that's where they're going to open the door and they're going to, and it's going to, so if they do it for them, why can't they do it for other companies? And other companies will start saying that. Why, you're actually hurting the companies, too, because the companies now have to make individual arrangements with 300 schools across the state.
Right.
Whereas if they were on a list, all you had to do was check to make sure...
Right, they got approved once and now they're on a vendor list.
Yeah, but it's a logical thing to bring up. The advocacy, it's not a legislative issue, but it's an issue for SED slash the regions to just, no, because it is a way in which, from a statewide systems perspective, a lot of money can be saved. I mean, they're not going to force us to buy certain software, but if they can, they can do some of the, the legwork across, you know, hundreds of districts, it just makes so much more economic sense.
So if you have a moment, you can go online and go to Board of Regents and submit some feedback.
It's a comment period.
It's a comment period for a couple of weeks.
You're right.
Any questions for Andrew?
Any big, like, and again, I know this is probably a little bit out, but like the rollout of 5G and any other type of wireless, you know, I guess it was five or six years ago, we did the huge network infrastructure. Is there something coming down the pipe that we need to be aware of or that, you know, you say, hey, we're going to need to make this capital improvement or, you know, certain changes in networking where, you know, it looks like a big item coming down the pipe?
So we did do some upgrades of our infrastructure this last year. We went to 10 gig fiber backbone to the rig. We only had a gig before, we doubled, we have a two-trunk 10 gig now going back to the rig. So we did, so we can expand our bandwidth as we needed. As we do some of the E-rate upgrades, we're going to be upgrading some of our access points and our switches to be able to handle the 10 gig and be able to handle some of that. As far as the 5G, 5G for us isn't quite there quite yet, but maybe eventually, maybe it is going to be. And we've moved a little bit slow on the Verizon sort of infrastructure project that we've been working on to be able to provide Verizon, to provide internet, sorry, cellular access, which actually may help us because if they're starting to roll out 5G at the same time, we might be able to upgrade that and get 5G as part of that, 5G cellular, which then we may be able to piggyback on. So there is some there, but I don't think, I don't think 5G is ready for, for our district like that, yeah. But yes, we do need to keep, keep looking at some of those and we're always kind of trying to see where the direction that things are going.
Thank you, Andrew. And Deepak.
All right, good evening, everyone. This year, the Fine Arts Department is focused on moving away from just solely focusing on creating and performing, which is, or presenting, which is often done in the arts, but also to include an emphasis on responding and connecting through the arts so that our students have a sense of the arts in their lives, not just making it and presenting it, but also how they can engage with it for the rest of their lives. And in doing so, some of the things that we've worked on this semester, or this year rather, was creating performances such as the first district-wide choral festival that had about 200 or 300 students from Wampus, HCC and the high school. We started doing performances across the buildings, an orchestra performance where the fourth graders came up and performed with the high school students. And then the high school students stacked with them, coached them on their pieces and then played the same songs that they learned as their introductory pieces in orchestra when they were at Wampus. We're starting to align some of the music listening examples that we do usually in HCC's band program to line up with the social studies teachers so that when the students are learning about certain topics in social studies, they're hearing music that is related to that specific time period. We've had teachers at the high school teach music history lessons as part of the ensembles and then bring them to the New York Philharmonic to not only learn about the composers and, but to hear it live there at Lincoln Center with the Philharmonic. At HCC, a big push has been mindfulness and the teachers have been creating mindfulness workshops to present to students and to faculty members that are related to the arts. We have, we're exploring choice-based art moving forward so that students have an opportunity to look, not only create what they're told to create, but to explore further and to make choices in their own creation. One of the major projects that are, that's taking place across the district is called the Consensus, C-O-N hyphen Senses project, which I think was created by the daughter of James Taylor and Carly Simon, in which one of our teachers who works in Greece every summer, works with refugees and had these, the refugee students create a piece of artwork based on a word and that's all she said. So she gave them a word like peace or yellow. These students then created pieces of artwork that came here to the high school and we had students in the music theory class that looked at the artwork and created a song. And then that song went to the sculpture class with Amy Menauchet where they did sculptures based on the song. Then it's going to go to the middle school to take another form and eventually go to the original place, which is fifth grade, where the students will then create their piece of art based on all the different transitions that have taken place. And at that point, the teacher will let them know how it's evolved from art form and from person to person. And we also have one other thing...
I feel like you can't talk after that.
Yes.
That's digestion. That's amazing.
And the last one, another exciting thing that we're doing at the high school is, a couple of years ago, we brought the high school teachers to the Copeland House, Aaron Copeland's house in Portland Manor, where we worked with the people who run the place and talking about connecting music and the history of Aaron Copeland and Americana and populism to our work. And what we, what we're doing this year is we've invited through this program called What's the Score, a composer that's coming in, working with the high school students, getting ideas of what they like in music, developing sounds and then creating a piece with them to be premiered at one of the spring concerts. So all of this stuff would not be able to be done without the support of the community and your support as well. So that brings me to the budget. And you'll see that the increases are mainly...
Trying to soften us up?
It's all good, that's right.
Back to the money. Very smooth.
Very smooth guy.
You'll notice that the increases in the...
Whatever you want.
But the increases are mainly due to the BHTA negotiated salary increases. In the art department, you'll notice that there's a decrease both in the contractual and others and the materials and supplies. These cuts reflect a decrease in the purchasing of print materials, many of which are being reused or have gone to the digital age. One of the ways that we're saving money, I mean, just because we have a sixth grade, a general music class that's now focusing on music technology. So instead of doing things where they...
Got to see that the other day. We got to see it this week. That was great.
I have to be the curmudgeon, all right? I'll be the curmudgeon. Why are salaries up 5.2% or 5.6%?
I wish I could say...
No, I thought that they were in line with our numbers, which were not there. So I'm just curious as to how it arrived at quite a change.
Without knowing specific people, it's likely due to some people within that group are moving lanes, they're moving from masters to masters 30, as opposed to getting steps as well. I mean, you remember, step increases are 1.7%.
No, I got step in lane, so you think we're having more lane changes in the arts department? Yeah?
I think so.
Well, if you go, no, it's, I mean, if you go back to, oh, we're at 10%, okay. Yeah, it's pretty common, there's an increase.
Yeah.
I can provide a list of the people and how they're shifting, if that's helpful. That's the increase of salary based on contractual agreements. Because the headcount's the same.
Yeah.
No increase in there?
That's a healthy increase.
In terms of increase and other increases, that the increase in materials and supplies category in music, which is solely attributed to the creation of a new budget code to maintain the newly renovated theater. What we realized in the past is that there was really no code that was supporting anything that needed to happen at the theater, both at the high school and at the middle school. So when we knew that the middle school was about to put on their show about a week before, we noticed that something needed to be repaired and we didn't have a place to actually support that repair. We figured out how to do it through funds in the music department, but now I think that we have a music, now that we have a renovated theater, we want to make sure that we have a dedicated code to make sure that things that need to be repaired are there.
Yeah. It also gives us the ability to track it going forward, so that we have a history of what the cost of repairing that new facility is.
And we've expanded this year, we've went further in the arts and education program through BOCs and in doing so, I estimate that at this point, we can expect as much as a $42,000 return on stay date for the 2019-2020 school year. That amount will probably increase since we still have a few more months left in the school year. And I think this more than covers any of the fine arts budgets and helps to provide our students with more opportunities to work with cultural institutions, professional artists, participate in programs and many other ways of experiencing the arts outside of our model.
They're speeches.
I'll just say, I was fortunate enough to see the production of Shrek at the high school, renovated theater, and I was blown away. I thought it was fantastic.
And the new theaters, beautiful.
Beautiful.
You set a high standard for yourself every year, Deepak.
Thank you.
Those kids are graduating.
Deepak, with that declining enrollment and all these phenomenal programs that we now have in the high school and all these new AP art classes, has it ever been a thought of this department to bring studio and art, which is the gateway to any art in the high school, down to eighth grade, like earth science and algebra? Is there, has that ever been a thought?
I think it's something that we've talked about in the past and we're not sure that it would work in terms of the structure at the middle school and teams. At the middle school currently, students are getting art, I think in 18-day periods in the rotation. And in order to actually get the credit for full-time studio and art, they would have to be participating in it full-time throughout the semester. I don't think that the structure would support us giving them the full credit.
There's so many wonderful programs. It'd be so nice to be able to take advantage of all the great art programs that are there.
Yeah. What's nice is that that ends up becoming the place where nearly 100% of the incoming students land and they all take that as a place to get all their elements of art before they move forward into the program.
Is your participation in music and art pretty much the same as it's been in terms of most students, but?
In terms of art, yes, we're doing really well there, too. Some of the new courses are even doing really well. Last year, we connected the film track with SUNY Early College Education Program. And what I'm seeing this year is that we have doubled the amount of requests for the movie-making, movie-making and media course, which is the introductory level course that goes through the next two courses that you can receive SUNY credit for. Jane Carlin's teaching a metalsmithing jewelry class, which is now getting double the amount of requests. In music, we are starting to look at what it's going to mean now that we have a declining enrollment. We've always had a bit of attrition between the middle school and the high school, but I'm thinking that as we start to look at more of a vertical alignment so that the teachers can work with each other and have an expectation of what's coming in, to work with them to make an easier transition from the high school, from the middle school to the high school.
Well, the music technology has become very, very...
Oh, absolutely.
So I wonder if that, there's a need, a larger need for that down in high school.
Yeah. Well, we've expanded last year also from the electronic music class, was renamed Studio Music and Composition, and we added a second course and that already, that has legs as well, too, and will be continued into the next year. We're also hoping to find a way to provide a fourth option for students in grade eight by giving them an electronic music course instead of a performing ensemble because not all of them want to perform. And I think after participating in performance ensembles in fifth, sixth and seventh, they know whether or not they want to participate in that kind of thing or make music in a different way.
That's great. Just bringing some new thinking to it and I think giving more options and some innovative forces to students.
Because the music program is so...
Really is. That's terrific. Thank you.
So much going on.
Changing with student needs, which is fantastic.
I think you would qualify for sectionals if they had that.
Well, we do. I mean, it's called all-state.
Yeah, exactly.
The instruments and...
And the instruments, yeah. I think this year alone, four all-state musicians, eight area all-state, 10 intermediate all-county, six elementary all-county, one student selected to show at the National K-12 Clay Show for her Me Too teapot. And students recognized as exemplar in the New York State Media Arts Show for their short film called Business School, 10 Katona Artist Young, 10 Katona Art Show Young Artist, and a artist being featured in the National Art Honor Society Arts Show down in DC.
Did I tee that up enough for you there?
Yeah.
That's great.
Congratulations, you've got such a strong staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I want to skip over you for a second, just to go to Public Information Services because it is very connected to what Deepak's doing. I think it's timely for us to talk about that, if you don't mind, Tim. I have had conversations with the board about a new approach that we're going to be taking at Byram Hills. We have BTV and we also have had in the past various other groups that are doing other media components, whether it's BOCs and having somebody who comes in as our, you know, public relations specialist who's posting to Facebook. We have certain things that are going out onto the webpage through an employee contract, stipend in a contract. So we have felt for quite a while that our, we are spread very far and thin regarding our whole portfolio and our platform and how we want to brand the school district. So the idea was that we would be pulling all of that in, back from BOCs, back from some stipends and that we would be enhancing our current BTV to be the Byram Hills Media and Communications Center to be renamed. But that concept, I went through the financials with the board and essentially, even though you see an increase of $16,320, I would anticipate that by the end of the year, we are going to see that this approach costs us less, that you will not see that $16,300. We've already started to get quotes and started a process of figuring out how we're supposed to be printing and it is coming back at maybe a third of the cost of what we're paying right now. So we're going to see significant savings on that. What I really like about this concept is between Brian Melso and Elise Traynor and another person in that unit, we are going to be able to expand and have something that's cross-platform. Right now, we don't have Facebook speaking to Twitter, speaking to anything else. We're not making any advancements as far as that's concerned. So we have isolated pockets of Twitter happening in sports and we're not really getting the message about Byram Hills out in a very uniform way. So this enables us to do it and I would anticipate that next year, you're going to see that it's a reduction in cost from this year even.
And this will fall under your areas, right?
And this will follow, fall under our joint supervision, yes.
Okay. And also the district website is under that as well, right?
Well, the district website will be under Andrew, but the person who's managing it will be working with me and Deepak. They'll be coming out of the BTV as well. But certainly Andrew's going to be the go-to person and not me when it comes to issues with posting to the regulation or even Deepak, for that matter. He's probably better than me.
So the technology piece...
Everything, everything essentially is in our house, except for the budget brochure and the calendar, and me anticipate pulling those in over time.
That'd be great.
I'll have control there.
Yes. You can make progress when you have control of everything. Otherwise, you're just, you know, every time we did something new, like, you know, Facebook or something else, we would have to pick a person who could do that job and pay them some sort of stipend to do it. And we don't really need to do that when we have our own unit here. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
So I figured that was a good timing.
Makes sense, makes sense.
Okay.
So we'll go backwards. And I just want to jump in and talk about Tim's decrease in salary. This is not a reduction in staff. For Tim. A staff member is budgeted in the code who more appropriately should be budgeting personnel. So I've made that adjustment. I've switched that person from curriculum to 1430 to personnel. So you'll see, on the other side of that, you'll see an increase in the personnel code in salary, but that's that difference.
And aside from salaries, my budget is nearly zero. I think it's a .0...
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollar increase. I don't know how that happened, but it did.
Put it back.
Thank you. There's a memo that details my budget and some of the anticipated expenses by budget code. Overall, my budget supports two main areas. It's teacher training, which can happen through teachers doing workshops and working together on curriculum, or bringing consultants in to work with teachers. That's one side of it. The other side is program support, so it could be curricular materials, for example, and testing materials. So those are the two main things that drive my budget. There's some miscellaneous pieces as well. So with the teacher training part, first, let me commend the directors here with both, you know, Jill, Deepak, and Andrew, who I work closely with on the curriculum support. So with Jill, we have worked with teacher training on co-teaching, and we are now, I think, entering, this is our sixth year, I believe, or fifth year with co-teaching, and bringing someone in to work, starting in sixth grade, and we went up the grade levels, and that was a lot of coordination on our part. And then working with Deepak on staff development, as the state is revising art standards, for example. Deepak referred to that shift in his department, and he's been rolling that out with his teachers. So we have been working through some workshops and some visitations so that he has that support of working with his teachers. And then Andrew and I work closely on, for training all teachers, as Andrew's role does involve professional development as well. And we're working closely on, for example, Andrew and I and his team work on developing a cybercamp every summer that teachers come to for training. And it traditionally started with technology training specifically, for example, how to use Microsoft Word. You know, we would actually have workshops on how to use Word and Excel in the classroom. And now we've shifted, while we still have a technology aspect to it, it's more instructional and focused. That's when we've done a lot of our work around problem-based learning, and we bring, we'll bring staff developers in for that work, but we always have a curricular and tech-focused together, because now, technology and curriculum should go hand-in-hand. Technology's the tool to help students access the curriculum. That's how we like to look at it. So they all have been partners in this work with me. I'll talk about a few examples of what my budget is supporting, and one, we are, next year, we'll be rolling out the, we're in the third year of our rollout of the K-5 math programs, so we have a K-4 right now. It'll go into fifth grade next year, so we'll be continuing professional development for teachers in fifth grade, but also continuing at K-4. I know that you have to do a lot of staff development over time for teachers to implement the program of fidelity. And we, I also have, we've been working on literacy, so with Peggy at the leadership at Wampus, she and Mary Beth have been working very closely to evaluate our literacy curriculum, K-5. We piloted an intervention tool in literacy. We also did in mathematics as well. We're going to expand those to some additional grades. With intervention tools, it takes a few years to see if it has an impact. We are seeing an impact right now, because there's a lot of benchmark assessments that occur, so we are seeing progress with students with both of these tools. But we want to expand it to another year and give it a little more time till we make any, draw any conclusions on the impact of those intervention tools in both math and literacy. We will start doing some science work, K-5, next year. The science standards have changed. There'll be some new science assessment, shifting the fourth-grade science test to fifth grade in a couple of years, and we are rolling out new standards. So we've been doing a gap analysis, and that work will continue. So there will be anticipated calls in science, K-5, over the next several years as well.
Will that impact the eighth-grade test, the state test?
Eventually, all the science assessments, there's a five-year timeline for all of the science assessments being reviewed, including the Regents' exams and the eighth-grade science.
So the fourth graders are going to be tested this year, next year?
No, they won't be tested twice. There's going to be a skipped year. So next year is normal. I think the year after is the gap year, and then fifth grade, it'll be the fifth grade, so they won't test those students twice. They thought ahead, which was great. We applauded the state finally for thinking ahead.
Yeah, but they got to choose, it's from the one that was here. I would take that.
Here it is.
So those are some of the curricular examples. I do want to thank the board and commend our faculty and our administrators for working on STEAM courses over the past several years. So what I do want to highlight, there was a course we started last year, was our Computer Science Principles, an AP course, AP Computer Science Principles, taught by our math chair, Lisa Pellegrino. We're in the second year this year, and I just received notice from her and from Chris last week that college board, I did not know they gave this award to school programs, but the college board gives a Female Diversity Award. I didn't know what that meant at first.
I saw that, I saw that, I didn't know.
Yes, so what that is, is for having high enrollment for females in AP courses. And our AP Computer Science Principles received that award this past year, and it was two years in a row. Congratulations to Lisa. And I give Lisa credit, who goes out and recruits girls. She's an excellent role model for these girls in being engineers and scientists, and speaks highly of, you know, her background as an engineer. This award is only given, was only given to 685 schools out of 18,000 schools worldwide that give APs. That's 3.8%. Lisa's numbers are, she has 60% enrollment this year, and it was 63 last year.
That's awesome.
Or women, 63% women?
Female, yeah, in those courses, which is awesome. I went back and looked at our other computer science course, the programming course, which is a more traditional programming course, and that has, over the past two years, on average, 29% female. So there is a difference there. We would like to see that change. But principals, I know Lisa has been really aggressive at recruiting our young female students for that. So that's nice to know.
Is there still a limit on the number of students that...
There is. There definitely is a limit.
A limit in terms of...
The number of students in these courses.
That we enroll in the course.
Well, they added another one.
We did. So next year, we're adding a section. So we will have two sections next year because of the interest in it. So we try to, you know, if we can meet that, we will. And Lisa was able to work it out in her department. Are they mostly 11th and 12th graders, is that right? Yes, 11th and 12th. And so Lisa's training someone, someone, one of her teachers is shadowing her this year, and she'll, there'll be another teacher teaching the other section next year.
That's great.
It's an amazing course.
I mean, that's fantastic. On that trend with respect to females in IT and coding, that organization Code.org has done a phenomenal job on marketing to develop that trend, and I didn't know if we were doing anything with that organization in the lower grades or not.
We have since the birth of it. We started the coding days. We've done it school-wide when it first started.
It's fantastic.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's taking hold to the extent that we have older students that are still staying very interested in that, and...
It is, and it doesn't hurt that in our middle school, we have a female tech teacher, and she does the coding with the students there. So I just think having female students in these positions is also good for girls to see, oh, I could do that, too. It doesn't become a question.
So are we attributing the change to marketing, basically, or, I mean, the criteria hasn't changed, right, for enrollment? The criteria, the standards are still the same.
I think there are a lot of things. I think that kids are starting to get experiences with this at middle school, to feel a confidence with it, then to have role models. I think, I don't know if you could attribute it to any one thing, but I think that they're all huge contributing factors.
There's been, we've been working on coding K-12 for five or six, seven years now, and we've had coding in the elementary for all students. So at the elementary grades, all students are participating in learning to code, and so there isn't a choice in that. So everyone gets that exposure, and same through our middle school.
Yeah, these kids in kindergarten are programming the, what are they, Potterbots? Is that...
Which ones? Well, we have the Azo...
Azo bots, right. They're programming them, they're learning how to code them, they're learning north, south, east, and west.
If you have them in the elementary, yeah, so.
I'm just curious about the sociological side of things. Like, why are girls now more interested in this? Are they more interested, or are they, or is it just being, is it the extended exposure? Is it that Lisa's there and she's a role model, or is it that she's targeting and saying, hey, you know, you might not have thought of this before, but you said Lisa was not somebody who would, who had thought of herself as being...
She's a liberal scientist all the way, and now she's going to school for engineering. So, and she, one of her big mentors in high school is Lisa Pellegrino. So I think it's who you look up to and who's guiding you, and she's doing a great job guiding these STEM girls and everybody.
She is.
That's why the Powell comes into having an amazing staff, so.
Yeah, we're very lucky, very lucky.
The number of boys enrolled in the program?
Right.
Has that changed, or is...
They're not allowed.
In the AP course specifically?
Is it that the boy, the number of boys is stable and the number of girls has increased, or has the number of boys gone down?
Well, we've only offered this particular AP course for two years, so, and we've had over 60% enrollment for those two years, in both years.
I read some article, I'm trying to remember where, because they come out just so fast and furious, but the number of women engineering majors in college is clearly trending up.
Oh, yeah.
Not withstanding Lori's daughter, who will be great, but there's been a study, and they clearly are, it's clearly trending up, which is great. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful dynamic.
I think the TAs, the seniors who are TAs for computer science, I believe it's half-male, half-female stuff.
And last year, it was, it was two female students last year.
This year, I believe it's half-male. I might be wrong.
You're seeing a real trend and a real change, which is great.
So we're proud of that accomplishment. And I thank you for the support of these STEAM courses. The board has funded us, and I appreciate that. So next year, we are...
Tim, just to interrupt you, it's interesting, because when you come up with an idea, you don't, you let it move naturally. And that's how we had this course in the first place and how it's continuing to grow. It's not that in the beginning of presenting this to the board, you said, this is the end result, that one day, we're going to have more girls in engineering courses, and we're going to have more sections than we thought. You know, it's started very organically with STEAM and then progressed to this. So I commend you for that, for, you have an open vision, and you allow things to take the form they're supposed to take, and not try to fit them into an end result that other people might want in a package.
That's a really good point.
Right.
Yeah, we resisted a packaged STEAM curriculum, Andrew, and I talked a lot about this, and we visited other schools that had purchased some programs. And when I saw kids sitting in a classroom, working on a workbook, and they were calling this STEAM, a STEAM class or STEM class or engineering, I really got angry. I mean, I remember pulling my team aside and saying, don't even get any ideas we're doing this. Just be politely. And I really said that to them, and it was, it was like, we're not, I'm not going to see kids in textbooks. That was something Andrew and I were adamant against. Student-centered, student-driven, students being learners, and that's what all these courses are. We had a hard time at the high school figuring out STEAM courses. It took us a few years. We had K-8 figured out really well, did it for a few years, and we were struggling at the high school because of the silo nature of it, and how do you do interdisciplinary work? And we just kept talking to people, we kept thinking of ideas, and we let it grow. And so through the robotics course, which also started as just a semester robotics one, we now have three semester courses of robotics, and we're seeing that grow through the pathways in engineering, which is another course of, taught by a math teacher, the science, the society, technology and society, STS, what's the first S, whatever, science, society and technology. That has been shifted toward a, having different modules related to problem-based learning, so it's attracting more students to that as well. So we're growing it organically, and it's growing from a very comprehensive K-8 curriculum as well that Andrew worked closely on. And then with Deepak creating with his teacher the metalsmithing course, having a female teacher teaching this metalsmithing course in the arts is also a really great area for role models.
Technology has been great, because that's the way, we're learning what they're doing there, so we're preparing our children.
Doing visits, and I told you before that Lisa has done some visits last year with Andrew. This year, she's continuing, though. She just came back from another visit. I'll update you on a future meeting. Still learning some really great stuff that's driving our programs. So just to end with focus for next year, a little differently than our approach with STEAM, which was bring a committee together, K-12, and figure it out, and then let it grow in natural areas. Global competence started with the idea at the high school, and with the Global Scholars Program, that was developed by Dwayne, Melissa, and Jen, and you heard the kids come up and talk at the February meeting. We will be rolling out the year-three course next year, and our enrollment, we have 100 students in years one and two. Next year, we'll have 142 in the three years, so there's strong interest in it. Our enrollment's increased in the year-one course going into next year. So when you look at that, this is a 10th, 11th, and 12th grade course, we'll have 142 students, that's going to be about a quarter of our population in 10th through 12th grade that are taking this in its infancy of developing this program. So we'll be continuing to support that. In two weeks, we have a tri-state team coming in to participate in what we call consultancy to give us feedback on how we're doing, give us some ideas. And I'm hoping next year to convene a K-12 study group, so we can start looking at, this is where we are in high school, what could this look like as we make connections from kindergarten to eighth grade? It's a little backwards from STEAM, but that's where it happened organically, and where the interest came. I don't think it's a problem, it's just a different approach.
It's a different approach, because, you know, the STEAM, because I remember when the courses were starting with the robotics in the middle school, the younger schools, the coding, and I remember having a conversation that we were concerned what happens when these kids get up to the high school, but now the high school is rich with the technology, the staff.
We were concerned when we kept working, and we were having a few false starts, and I remember saying to Andrew, well, if we can't figure it out, the kids are going to tell us eventually, because they're going to get here and want something, and they'll demand it from us, because these kids were very excited coming out of the middle school.
So I think it'll work the other way, too.
I think so.
You'll forgive me for reminiscing for a moment, but I'm just listening to Tim and this discussion tonight, and going back to Jackie Taylor's first year at Byram Hills, when she came here, and all the things she wanted to do. And we've gone so far beyond that. It's, it'll be unrecognizable to anyone to see how far we've come. It's just remarkable.
The seeds were planted there.
Yeah, the seeds were planted, and look how they've grown, and look where you've taken them. Fantastic.
Strong curriculum writing, sticking to high standards, looking to what college and universities want, and knowing that's where our kids are going and preparing them.
And just to echo to what Jen was saying, but it's such a thoughtful approach that you all take to this. It's not, like you said, not starting with what the end game is. It's very thoughtful, it's methodical, but, you know, look at the results.
We don't make the man fit the suit.
Thank you. That's kind of neat that you're looking backwards down at K-8 from the high school work. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. It has to happen where it's going to happen organically first, and then what, it seems like a lot of thought has been put into it in all these programs, is then how it fits into the system. Right, and that's what we've done. It does fit the vision. Now, here's this piece, how can we bring it up?
The student leadership board, am I right? Started that way as well, and then, so did sales start first, now they're working together?
Yeah, that started with the high school. It started with the high school.
Well, you had that VIP, and then that kind of leadership, SOB, and then back to the middle school.
Back to the middle school, connecting it. And I actually, just coincidentally, last week, got an email from a second-grade teacher who went on a trip over February break and went scuba diving for the first time, and was amazed to learn about the coral reefs and how they're dying, and did a bunch of research, and came back and did a presentation for her kids, and sent it to me. Not knowing that, I was thinking about Global Scholars and starting a K-12 group on world issues or current events, saying, I think you're going to be on my committee next year. And her kids were fascinated with this, learning about the ocean, and why are the reefs dying? And she got into this natural, inquisitive discussion with them. I said, you're going to be part of my team. I have a feeling we're starting to make the connection between Comenell and high school, and we'll fill in the blanks. That was pretty exciting, that things do happen organically, when you have a culture that allows a lot of learning and professional learning to happen in collaboration. And I thank you for that support, because my budget supports that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim. And now for the grand finale. Mia, did you want to take us to what's going to be included in our next budget hearing, three?
Why don't you keep stuff with us?
Mia, you're really good at it.
Where are we? March 19th, budget hearing two. Next week, March 26th, is budget hearing three, and that's the final opportunity for public input, if anybody is interested in joining us. April 9th is budget hearing four, which is the final proposed budget being presented. April 23rd, budget adoption. May 7th is the review of the proposed budget, that's budget hearing five, and May 21st is our vote at Crittendon, 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
So on top of discussing athletics, operations, and management of transportation, we'll also be presenting estimated tax rates for all four of our towns within our districts, based on changes in their assessed value and equalization rate.
Will that include a detailed explanation of equalization for them?
Absolutely. Of course, that's an easy conversation. We also will be reviewing the...
True job, yeah. That's right.
We also will be...
Forty-six is the number.
The revenue side of the budget. Important to note that over, for the eighth year in a row, the district will propose a tax levy that's below the maximum allowable tax levy based on the calculation. Last year, you proposed a tax levy that was $920,000 below, and next year, we're going to propose a tax levy that's approximately $300,000 below. So since inception of the tax cap over the last eight years, the district has approximately $1.9 million levied below the maximum permissible by the state tax calculation.
That's a lot.
It is.
Yeah.
That's great.
Most responsible.
It's great.
Okay.
I think that concludes our...
Well, thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your great work and time.
Thank you for waiting.
Well, I think it officially concludes.
I think I should say.
Yeah, it officially concludes the budget hearing. Yep, thank you.
Bye, Karen. Thank you, Karen.
Does this work?
All right, we're back. So next item on the agenda is policies.
So there are, I believe, two policies for second read. Policy 0100 is the nondiscrimination and equal opportunity. And this was updated due to a shift in some regulations on accessibility to this policy via electronic means, particularly on the district's website. And we've made some changes regarding that piece. And the second policy is the fiscal accounting and reporting, policy 6600, which was updated to reflect the change in the duties of the audit committee. And then we also merged the regulation with the policy to make it more streamlined. And those were the changes and those were second reads.
Move to approve policy 0100 and 6600 is second reads.
Second.
All in favor? All right?
Thank you.
Motion, Karen. Second reads are good. All right, so we go to new business, 3.1, naming.
Yes, I'd like to start with that. So policy 7500, naming facilities, funds and events, is a policy that the board spent considerable time over, over the course of a year or so. And that was really based on a request to name the theater after a former teacher. The board deliberated for a very long time about the concept of naming, spent quite a bit of time working on the naming facilities, funds and events. And I actually found that that policy and the vetting process was very helpful to the board in considering whether or not something should be named for the district. The theater should be named. In light of current events, it's important to continue to look at this policy, to take a look at how we are naming in this day and age and in this school district at this time. Consideration of things that are currently named and things that would be named in the future. So that is why this presents itself tonight as new business.
Great, and thank you for the introduction. And I think as a backdrop, I think, yeah, in light of current events and the fact that I think we've always taken this policy very seriously and we did deliberate on it for many, many months with regards to the last request that came in. I think it's just appropriate to have a discussion tonight, an open discussion, not necessarily with a definitive conclusion, but just to get the board's sense of whether there is appetite after just revisiting this naming policy and everybody having hopefully had a chance to read it again. Do we want to think about more discussion at the board level to revisit it? Or are we comfortable and satisfied with the way the policy reads now?
You know, I did relook at that policy now after it's been some time, if we were so in the throes of it. And I think that we could benefit, given today's environment, I think it would benefit us to maybe take another look at it. Maybe have another discussion first to see if we want to give the naming, the policy committee some direction. But I think it warrants, because I think there's still wiggle room in that policy to be interpreted different ways by future boards. And I think this board needs to be heard on what we feel naming should be in this district or shouldn't be in this district. So I'm all for having another discussion about that.
I agree with Robyn. I think, and I think this policy is one of some importance that current events would, I think, lean to have us take another look at this. And I think a fundamental question that the board, I think, should answer, and I'm just going to quote myself in the prime reading, is whether or not school districts should be in the naming business. And I think it's a question that we should answer candidly and to see how that impacts what we've done in the past and what we may do in the future. I realize that for many in the community, this is a delicate, sensitive subject. But I don't think it's a subject that we can turn away from, given the world in which we live. So I would be in favor of just revisiting the policy, discussing it. I don't think this is something that we necessarily can resolve in one meeting or two. I think we will do this in a deliberate way, but I do think we should take a look at.
I agree that we should revisit this policy.
I agree too.
Okay. Well, I think that seems very clear. I think it makes sense that we move forward. We can put it on a future agenda item as unfinished business. And we can, because I think we need to be at a point as a board where we reach enough consensus that we can give the policy committee enough guidance if we decide that changes should be made to know kind of what direction they're going in. And then, of course, the policy committee can do their work. But the next step, I think, is to have the whole board have this discussion, given the importance of it. And so we can plan on that at some point in the future.
If possible, and maybe it's not, because as the year goes on, we tend to get very busy. I would like this board to reexamine it rather than wait for the new board. Because this board has been intimately involved in the policy changes that were made. And I think it's appropriate that this board deal with a revisitation of the policy.
Yeah, I would agree. We spent such a huge amount of time on this.
That makes sense.
That it makes sense that we be the board that looks at it.
Makes sense. Okay.
Are we thinking, we are in budget season. Are we thinking that we put this as an unfinished business item toward the end of our budget season as opposed to next week when that...
Yeah.
Before the May 21st vote?
Before the vote?
I think we have time after, after the next budget meeting, after budget hearing, will be three.
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 I think any time after three, we can take a look at.
Yeah.
Before May, before the mid-May.
Yeah.
So we could look at this on the schedule where we have time and dedicate some focus to it.
It's like now we're looking at it as a four.
Oh, so we could put it on in May.
Before.
We're going to make suggestions and then bring it to the policy committee at that point.
We can talk about it and figure out whether we want to take the next step of bringing some sort of guidance in terms of high-level changes to the policy committee.
It's also possible that you may not need to go to the policy committee. And that the board as a whole can simply do what it needs to do.
Right, we say that, we might say that the policy is fine as is. It's on our discussion, but yeah.
It's an initial discussion board and then we figure out whether after that discussion it makes sense to bring it to the policy committee.
It may even be just a tweak that the whole board decides and doesn't even have to go to policy.
That's right.
That's right.
Yep.
So Jen, the whole board's together until July 1st, so.
Yep. So I'm thinking if we move it to budget hearing four and the final proposed budget, we can put this on as unfinished business for April 9th. Just as a suggestion, if before that meeting, we could have the policy sent to us again and the vetting process information.
It's attached.
It's attached.
It's here, it's here.
Yep.
Oh, it's right there. Sorry. Okay, got it. All right.
All right, so we go on. Through the, yeah, okay, we'll go on to staff reports.
All right. Well, the only staff reports I have, which I think I might spend as much time as we spent on the budget, is about student highlights, which really is like the best part about my job. First, I want to talk about our science research students who participated in the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair this past weekend. And the students spent the time displaying their posters to this panel of judges. We had 23 students from our science research program recognized for outstanding research. And they took first place, second place and third place categories and everything from cellular and molecular biology to neuroscience to computobi informatics to... Oh, God, I don't even, I mean, it runs the gamut, physics and astronomy and microbiology. Oh, we even have Elise Kinnar on here for medicine and health, second place category. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And so just, it has been, we cannot even understand the magnitude of the successes that these kids have had in the science research program. I applaud them for their hard work and their mentors and teachers who have been spending the time with them. We also had our finalists in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair, Samantha Abruzi's, Renner Quicken and Brent Perlman. So congratulations to them also. But every time we turn around, there seems to be another opportunity. And when you go into science research, you actually, or you don't even have to be in science research. You could be in an English class or a social studies class and catch a child from science research practicing with a teacher in another subject. I mean, it happens more often than you could even imagine.
When you think about the sustained and dedicated effort to one thing for years.
Which is beautiful.
And which is very different than your typical like school experience where you're going from course to course.
Right. And despite the rigor in that course, I don't think you get that same oppressive, I have so much to do feeling. It's a very different feeling.
You do it a lot.
This is mine, this is what I picked, this is what I've been pursuing over all this time and these are the supports I have and it's driven by what I want to do with it. Not that I have to take a quarterly exam and a whatever else. Not that we have those, but.
That's great.
It was fantastic. Last night, I was happy to be at our athletic awards celebration. And at that time, they gave awards to the All-Star Athlete, the Team Leadership Award, the AReddy Award, which is to a senior who really shows dedication, motivation, perseverance, and the Bobcat Scholar Athlete Award. So for those awards, we had our All-Star Athletes, Ethan Behar and Maggie Walsh. Ethan for ice hockey and Maggie Walsh for girls' basketball. I mean, the accolades for Maggie have been amazing. The AReddy Award, Olivia Gordon for girls' basketball and Luke Gordon for ice hockey. Leadership Catherine Lev. Catherine Lev, I mean, every time you turn around, whether her clay pot is being presented in Minnesota, I think it was Minnesota, wasn't it? I can't remember. But I mean, her work is extended for track. And Robbie Waxman for swimming. I'm so happy to see that. And Bobcat Scholar Athlete, Alan Chang for swim. Alan is just, I, these are children, Lauren Selkine for track. These are children who are not just here. They are in every facet of that school. Whether I'm seeing somebody like as part of the arts program, as I told you, or I'm seeing somebody involved in the play. They're involved in numerous different parts of that high school. And these are kids I feel have capitalized on their high school time.
That's right.
They really have. So congratulations to them. And it was a very nice event. Rob Kasagna put together a really nice event. He had parents and kids laughing and it just felt like home when you were at that event, which is really nice. And the last one is I'm very proud of our Youth Against Cancer, who are going to have on March 22nd, 27th, I'm sorry. They are going to have what they call Community for a Cure. And it's going to be an evening of cancer education, where they're going to have featured speakers from Sloan Kettering and Gildas Club and the Les Garden Foundation. So if anybody's available, March 27th at 7 o'clock at the high school, you can join us there for that. I just love that our kids are putting together events that are not only supporting others, but are also informing others.
It's also supporting our own. They've done wonderful work to donate to Maria Farah with some of our own children in our community. They're living.
Very important. And that is my report for tonight.
Excellent. Great report. Anything else, Tim? Curriculum budgets.
Happy now you got your money.
I don't have anything else to say. $75.
Where's that 75 bucks, Tim?
Thanks for the 75 bucks.
You're good. Okay, great. Board reports, I don't have anything new. Anybody have anything?
I am going to a legal conference on Friday. So if anyone has any legal issues or questions, just let me know. There are two that I've thought of that I am going to pursue. But if there's anything else that you have questions about, there'll be a panel of lawyers and I'm happy to ask any questions that would benefit our community.
We have the preschool principal's coffee at Coman Hill for incoming students. So we've always just assumed it was incoming kindergarteners. But it was pointed out to me this year by the preschool community that we also have a significant number of first graders that are coming from the Montessori program where they have a kindergarten program. So we're making sure we hit that market as well. And we've actually been, so the flyer's gone, the blast has gone out to the preschool community now. It's on April 3rd at 9:45. Jen's going to be there and Mary Beth will be there and Lori and I will be there. I think Lori must have been early, but you guys are welcome. We get lots of questions. It's a really, it's a really nice, warm, you know, environment with moms and dads who are just really curious and excited about the district. It's been great. It's our second year doing it.
April 3rd, you said?
April 3rd at 9:45 at Coman Hill. And I've been asked also by the preschool community, something for us to consider is, are we going to do a nighttime event for the parents, for working parents? And we hadn't done it because, you know, we're very sensitive to Mary Beth and making sure that it doesn't conflict with the orientation programs. And that I actually put in the flyer that there is no overlap in content because we found that people thought that they could skip the orientation program and come to this or vice versa. They shouldn't come to this because they already went to the orientation. So I actually put in the flyer that there was no overlap in content. But, you know, it's for, maybe for next year, it's something we should consider doing, perhaps a second one in the evening if there's demand.
Yeah, I think we do with it what we did with the Budget Information Committee. You know, see if there are enough people who would be able to come at night to warrant going out. And if there aren't, we'll keep the one during the day. But it's worth asking and seeing what kind of feedback we get.
Definitely the RSC today.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Anybody else have anything?
Tomorrow we visit the high school. Yes, that's exciting. We visit the high school.
So I can't make that one anymore. I did tell Janine, but I see that it's still on here. So I'm just telling you guys I can't make the high school one.
We will be visiting everything from science research to math classes to some art classes. Interesting.
Good.
9:30, right? Yes, 9:30. You haven't been back to the rest thing. Next year, make sure you put on a calendar.
I don't know, I don't have a calendar.
Coman Hill is on the...
The April 3rd?
The 1st, April 1st, isn't it?
April 1st is Coman Hill?
Oh, for the visit.
Okay, I didn't know we rescheduled it.
Especially since I was the proponent of these whole things to begin.
Yeah, it's April 1st.
April 1st at 9:30. For Coman Hill.
Yeah.
Great, all right.